Folks, thank you for being here tonight. We're gonna go ahead and get started on tonight's work session. First item of discussion would be connection fees expenses of the water department, connection requirements and connection fees of the sewer department by Mr. Richard Peterson.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
And, you know, just so everybody, you know, I know you keep this by your bed every night and it's the five-year capital projection spending, so... And in terms of water, you know, we're looking at a new production facility and we're looking at some transmission mains and it looks like expenses could be as much as, you know, six, six and a half million dollars based on the projections. Of course, that, those are estimates and not, you know, validated until we get projects put together and bids received. So, looking at the water in terms of connection fees, the fifteen hundred dollars that we currently charge now for three-quarter inch connection is pretty consistent with what it would take to install the well treatment and storage facilities to provide that level of service in terms of capacity. But what the connection fees for water do not do is, they do not increase that requirement for connection fee as you get to a larger sized meter in order to provide the amount of capacity that's gonna be required for what may be a two-inch meter request for a service that requires a lot more water each month, then therefore you have to have more production facilities, you have to have more storage and you have to have more transmission. So, the water part of it basically leaves a single-family residential fixed, but what it does is it takes each meter size and it creates a multiplier so that we can take that fifteen hundred dollars for an equivalent residential service. And for example, if it's a one-inch meter that they're requesting, then it would be multiplied by two and a half times that because the capacity of a one-inch meter can be two and a half times that of a three-quarter inch meter. And, and the logic falls further, you know, down with two-inch meter would be seven and a half times. And so then you're able to recover the money that you're having to provide in terms of the production and, and treatment and storage capability for that particular size service. It also does a little bit different with the residential units. If there's multi, if there are multifamily type installation with either apartments or condominiums or hotel units, we apply an equivalent residential capacity factor to how many units they would have. So, if there was a, and in this case, we'll use a hotel and we use a hotel room per day, we'll generally use about half of what a residential connection would use. So, if it's a twenty-unit hotel, we would treat it as if it was ten residential units. So, the multiplier would be fifteen hundred times ten for a twenty-unit hotel. And anyway, so that's kind of the, the background on the water connection fees. I've also included some other charges. You know, there's installation charges that are provided now and within this and, and they're based on providing the, the basic tap, the service saddle, the pipe and the meter yoke and the meter to provide that service. And so, we'll have an installation fee. And what we hope to do wind up, as we develop our municipal work order system, we hope to be able to start tracking cost of specific size services and as we, you know, work into a decent track record for expenses, we'll be able to adjust those based on real cost.
Did you say the installation fee is a tap fee?
No, it's, it's an installation fee in addition to the tap fee.
Yeah, I was gonna try, and thank goodness Lisa helped me out here. So, council, I'm trying to, and if you have it digitally, I think what we're, so what we're looking at in existing is the section twenty-one dash thirty-two. Is that right?
For water.
Yeah.
Yes, twenty-one dash thirty-two. That is correct. Twenty-one dash thirty-two.
Yeah. Twenty-one.
Dash thirty-two.
Dash thirty-two. And if you look at the first page in your, your book and if you looked at the meter size, you have, in fact, well, in, in the current ordinance, there's, there's not a two, three or four.
Correct.
Specified.
And, and really what it specifies is that there's a fixed cost plus material and labor, which I think it reverses back to the cost of the one-inch connection. But anyway, when, when you start looking at the difference a two-inch meter can provide in terms of water volume, you know, you should collect more than just what it takes material and labor-wise above that of a one-inch or three-quarter inch to, to give them that service.
And where did you, what'd you, what'd you base these new fees on as far as, like, what you think the actual cost is to install that or is it?
You talking about the, the installation fee?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at the capacity asset fees for the two, three and four-inch. That seems to be the, you know.
Right. And then you look at, and you look at a, a well, a production facility and, and an elevated tank and, and you know, so, so the well may cost in terms of maybe a dollar fifty per gallon for, to, to put one in. The treatment facility may be four, four and a half dollars a gallon and then the elevated tank may be two. So, when you start adding those numbers up, you get about seven dollars, you know, times the two-hundred-and-twenty-five gallons per day that a residential customer would use. And that's kind of how you back into the fifteen hundred dollars, which is exactly what we have today anyway. Now, I do not have an out-of-town rate that is different. What I have included is a multiplier. And the multiplier for the out-of-town connections would be one and a half times the, the capacity fee. And the reason that is, is really because as we start looking at the system to, to serve areas outside the town, we have to start running larger transmission mains and we have to start interconnecting these places that, that, you know, the construction requirement to provide that level of capacity, the further away you get and, and, you know, obviously that's outside of town. It just takes a little bit more effort from a investment standpoint to, to provide that level of service, so there's a multiplier for that.
Yeah, so before we go any further, anybody have any questions?
Lisa had a question on, maybe some examples of some of the businesses that are on a two, three, four inch and what, so, right now, let's see, the four inches, if that's not in this current list, are they just charged, is it capped off at whatever the, the one-inch is?
Five on twenty-one dash thirty-two, Jimmy?
Yep.
It says twenty-five hundred dollars, but is that capped at twenty-five hundred dollars?
I think it's plus the materials.
Okay, so plus the materials.
I think so. And you, I mean, I tried to print those off and I don't know if y'all use the printer much at the Public Works building, but sometimes it can be cantankerous. And when it's like ten minutes after four and you, it's not coming out, you say, "I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to..." Maybe I can read off of yours or something.
I'm just trying to get a estimate, for example, like on that four inch, if you're gonna go from twenty-five hundred plus, I don't know how much the materials will be, up to twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah. I'm just trying to get, that's what I'm trying to do.
It's a big jump.
Some idea of what.
What are we talking about?
Well, to put that in perspective, multifamily-wise, that could be a two-hundred-and-fifty-unit hotel.
Okay.
Just one-hundred-and-twenty-five equivalent residential units times two would be a two-hundred-and-fifty-unit hotel.
Okay.
And when you look at a two-hundred-and-fifty-unit hotel, you, the, the construction expense to provide that facility and you start looking at twenty-seven thousand versus twenty-five hundred or three thousand based on the cost of materials, it's, it's not a big impact to, to that. I mean, you, you don't build much to put a four-inch meter in that's not pretty significant.
I got you.
And at that point in time, I mean, this is not a major cost to those types of developments.
Right, and that's all I'm trying to get a, get a feel for.
So, yeah, I was thinking roughly, it's, it's about two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per unit if you were at, at a hundred-and-twenty-five units for a four, or a four-inch line.
And, you know, what, what we want to do too though, we want to have people provide the size meter that they need for these developments. So, you know, it's gonna take somebody that needs a pretty decent meter to want a four-inch meter to start with. And, you know, and I've spent more in, in my career time talking people out of a bigger meter oftentimes than trying to convince them they need a bigger meter. Because generally, somebody will design the pipe going into a building and if, if they need a two-inch pipe because it's a long run and there's a lot of friction loss in that pipe, they'll assume you need a two-inch meter to go with it. Well, sometimes you don't. And so, sometimes you, you know, you want to increase the service line maybe, but that doesn't mean you necessarily have to increase the size of the meter for the volume of water they're talking about needing. And we try to work with all the, all the larger developer and what their fixture counts are and, you know, what the instantaneous flow volumes are. And we try to, you know, work with them so they get what they need and not have to do any more than they have to to accomplish their construction project.
Okay. It'll take a little while for this to sink in.
Oh, absolutely.
This is similar to what you're already...
Right, and we went, you know, when we had the ordinance for the rate increases, of course, the, the connection fees were part of that too.
Right, I mean, this was given over a year ago.
And I will say that the, the multiplier on the one-inch, Lisa, and I'm sorry I didn't, it is, it should be thirty-seven fifty.
That's what I was actually sitting there calculating. That one seemed off.
I, I looked at that earlier today, but it's, and it, probably my fault, but...
And you want to run through that for sewer?
Yes, sir. And sewer is very similar. The same multiplier and then back the same. I, I started out with about a, I, I think it was seventeen fifty and I thought, well, that's... When you start looking at the numbers, it, it seemed to grow pretty fast, so I backed it back down to fifteen hundred. And it's real similar to the cost of a wastewater plant and some transmission components within the system and how you determine that number. And I haven't necessarily compared what other connection fees are to other utilities, but I'm pretty confident that most are at or above that rate. There may be a few that aren't, but that's what, you know, what, what it takes to provide the, the plant capacity for, for a connection. Now, we do have on the, on the installation charge, because there's so many different, you know, that, that somebody may build a subdivision and that's one of the reasons about the water installation charge, because most developers now with a subdivision provide a water service. So, there is no installation fee when the builder gets a permit for a water service. That'd be the same thing with the sewer. But in sewer, because you're having to dig and potentially add a lateral to a line that could be four feet deep, it could be eight foot deep, it could be twelve foot deep, you really don't know how much of a hole you're gonna have to dig. You don't know how much pavement or how much sidewalk, how much other utilities you're gonna have to avoid. So, in, in the sewer part for connection requirements, we're just quoting what we think that specific job will require. And one thing that we've been doing on subdivisions lately for a, a family split, and there's been a lot of family splits in the fruit and nut section, well, most of the time, that one lot had one lateral. And then you say, well, is it a minor subdivision or is because they need to provide a lateral to the second lot, does that make it a major subdivision? And, and I prefer not to make it a major subdivision. I prefer to say, well, you know, let's put on the plat that they're responsible for the cost of the additional service to the additional lot. Well, sometimes people read that and sometimes they don't, but in this particular case, it won't matter because we'll, the, the cost of that service will be within the ordinance and I think we'll have every right to charge it. The, the other charge in here is a, it, let's see what it's called. An access fee. And, and this takes place on lines that were developed after March thirty-first of this year. And the reason I'm saying that is because it looks to me like we're fixing to get into an expansion of forced mains, which could potent, and we may be putting lift stations in with certain depths that allow people to hook up to sewer that they really didn't have any stake in the game of how it got there. And so, if, if, if we run a forced main or if we do an upsizing on a subdivision and we upsize a forced main to get from point A to point B, and then between that, there's another piece of property that wants to take advantage of that upsizing that we funded, then there's an access fee if they're gonna hook into that forced main based on the frontage or the, or the average frontage of that property. Or there's an access fee if they happen to be lucky enough to have a gravity system that's there that they can hook into. And that's thirty-five dollars. And that, and that basically saves them the cost of having to do any off-site extensions to get service to the property they're wanting to develop. And then, and then, and the, the way the upsizing would work under this scenario, if somebody had a piece of property two miles away and it costs some amount of money to, to get utilities from that location to where there was existing capacity, then we would limit the amount of their off-site construction component to the access fee. And then we would fund everything above that, knowing that we would recover that same money from the people who would develop along the way and take advantage of that line that was just installed. In theory, that gets our money back.
I've got a few questions, council, but somebody else have any questions?
I don't have any questions now, but do some more homework.
Yeah. So, Richard, these are kind of minors, so number five, under item five, twenty-one dash fifty, this would be sewer A five.
Right.
About the rainwater not being allowed to enter into the sewer system. You know, we talked about this, it's been, oh gosh, a year or two, you know, shortly after you came to work for the city.
Right.
And, you know, I remember quipping that if you bring us something to pass, we'll pass it yesterday. You remember that?
Right.
So, I'm glad to see that in there, but I, I wonder if we, we need to beef that up. There, there needs to be a penalty for non-compliance.
Well, coincidentally enough, we, we had a meeting of all the water operators with, with the local representative and we talked about this very issue.
Okay.
And there was an opinion that it doesn't matter what the people on private property do, that we're still responsible. And, and of course, all the operators felt like that was a bad approach to take and so we asked that there be a template set up that municipalities could pass and that when they pass that ordinance, it would give the teeth of the Clean Water Act because, you know, putting stormwater in the sewer creates a lot of problems and, and there should be some accountability. And, and we're actually waiting for that template before we bring that forward.
Okay, so we, we hope to improve on this in the future?
We're hopeful, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, because it, it, we really need some teeth and, you know, to say that the municipality's responsible, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense because if everybody in the city just decided to, to take the cap off their, you know, their, their cleanout line and their, and it runs off their roof and into, we can't be responsible for that.
I think that the template could be, you know, you, you put this in there, that fees, applicable fees will be applied and then you have that as a separate.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. It can be done later.
And at one time though, it was reference to another ordinance that had specific fines in it. And, and I think there was a way to create a reference for violations of this particular item to that ordinance, and I don't know how that works.
Yeah, and so would we make that, so would, do you think, and this is in the future and it really doesn't affect this today, but in the future, when we pass that portion of, you know, whether we modify this or whether we just add on, will we be able to retroactively penalize people for?
I wouldn't think so, but, and I would think that, that the ordinance that we would be pushing...
Well, I wouldn't say a penalty for somebody, what happened in the past. I'm saying you've got until this date to fix it.
Right, yes.
And if you don't fix it and we come out and find out that water's going...
That's what we anticipate, giving them a set...
Then, then there's a penalty.
Give them a set timeframe in sixty days, thirty days, however long we decide. And then, yeah, we're gonna fix it and charge you and there's a fine that goes with that.
Right, okay. So, yeah, in other words, not just for new construction, it's for existing construction.
It's for anybody everywhere, yes. And I would suspect there would be a sewer use ordinance that would be a little bit further, you know, deeper than what this one sentence talks about in terms of rain. Because, because sewer use ordinance is what it gets back to then is, if, if we've got the plant design for treating BOD load at three-hundred milligrams per liter and somebody's putting in two-thousand milligrams per liter BOD, you know, that, that imposes a, a condition at the plant that makes it difficult to, to treat that water. If, if there's oils and like grease traps in restaurants, you know, if they ignore them for a little while and all of a sudden now they got, you know, a lot of grease getting into the system that clogs up three-hundred, four-hundred thousand feet downstream and it causes problems, you know, it's a problem for us. So, so there's penalties for that. But there are, you know, basic parameters that these plants are designed for and people that exceed those parameters, there, there's gotta be some way to allow them to come back into compliance.
Yeah, it sounds mean, but it, I don't think it is. I think it's necessary.
It's, I mean, if they're pay, if, if they're causing more expense to us, then everybody has to pay.
Right.
Definitely they ought to have a fee.
Well, it's just people need to be responsible for, you know, what they're doing beyond what could be reasonably expected.
Yes.
Questions? Do you guys want to, I mean, I need to know whether or not you want to try to get it on next agenda? Do you want to think about it? Do you want to, you want to, you want to bring Richard by for questions at the next work session and then pass it to the next one or do you, you know, leave it as is? I need some feedback.
I can meet with Richard, you know, before the next meeting.
Kind of leaning on you and, and Kevin, this is, you know, kind of up you guys' alley right here to, to, to give us some input. So, can you try to set that up with Kevin as well?
Yeah.
And Kevin is gonna be here tonight. He's, he said that he might be running a little late, so that's the two that I would look at and say, what do you think?
We'll do that.
Working out our water and sewer issues?
I'm not, I understand.
You're, you're smart not to do that, that's right.
I do think that adding the applicable fee to number five in addition to whatever y'all have concerns about, so it wouldn't be left as-is.
So, say that again, on number five, a fee?
Well, you're just saying applicable fees for rainwater, right.
To fix it?
Applicable fees.
Yeah, could we, could we do that? Say, could we put in an applicable fee for repairing that before we get to the fine, the penalty stage because we're not ready for that?
Let us study that a little bit more. Is that what you're asking, Mayor? Are you saying fees or are you talking penalty?
Well, I mean, I guess if you, it already says that in no case shall any collection of rainwater. I think that might be fine.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Because then we have another that says, okay, here's the fee if you do.
Yeah.
I think what, what would apply to an existing ordinance is the first time is a warning, the second time is fifty dollars, the third time is five hundred dollars.
You could say penalties apply.
And I think there's something on the book somewhere that kind of has a progressive type of penalty.
Yeah.
And I think that's what we'd be looking to, to put in here, reference ordinance, whatever it is that has that particular schedule.
Well, what I think I heard him say was they weren't ready to put that phase of it in there yet. You weren't ready to put in a penalty.
Well, if we have an ordinance that replaces all that anyway, I mean, we, we would want to use that, but, but if we want to pass it with something immediate, which, that's fine too. I mean, we can put some kind of progressive...
Could we put it in this? Lisa, we could put it right here, couldn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I agree. The numbers you stated was a good progressive penalty too.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, yeah, warning fifty bucks, five hundred bucks.
Whatever the state allows.
Yeah, maximum the state allows, yeah. Or would it, you know, get the wording from Lisa?
Actually, the maximum. I think that may be the words that somebody was telling me before.
That's exactly what... One point eight, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Everything reverts back to one point eight if it's not specified.
Right. Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Thanks for your work on this.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay. Use of the north side of the triangle, which would be the rectangle. So, Councilman Brown, this would be the land north of Veterans Drive. We call the triangle property everything between 104 and Veterans, but then when we purchase the triangle, it also includes the land to the north.
That is correct.
All right, I'll let you talk about it.
All right, I'm gonna invite Joseph and Katie Bolton, they're the owners of Procycle Tribe, y'all would come on up, please? Katie's gonna give us a little history before I was around as a councilman on the property, but I'll go ahead and kind of give you an, yeah, have a seat, please. Sorry.
Hey, Mayor, Council.
So, I met with probably ten to fifteen biking enthusiasts, including Joseph and Katie, probably a year, maybe a lo, a little bit younger, longer than a year ago. And they expressed a lot of interest in, in putting some kind of biking trails on this parcel. And as you see, this little proposal that you have in front of you is stated to an individual that was on that committee. He reached out to this International Mountain Biking Association as an expert in developing the trails. I'll read this aloud so everybody kind of knows what we're talking about here. "Thanks for the opportunity to submit this proposal to complete a feasibility concept study in Fairup, Alabama. The IMBA, International Mountain Biking Association, Trail Solutions proposes to provide staff for onsite meetings and field review of the project area. An outline of approach is included in our proposal. As an international leader in developing natural surface trails, IMBA Trail Solutions has worked extensively with local clubs and NGOs while working with state and federal land management agencies and has deep experience in ensuring trail projects meet our clients' goals. Our staff excels at planning, design and construction of natural surface trail facilities and bike parks that provide high-quality experiences for visitors of all ages and ability levels." So, you know, this group kind of went back and forth about grassroots, hey, why don't we go to the city and see if they'll let us get in there with a bush hog and cut our own trails? And as the discussion went on, I think there was probably five or six meetings that were held, it, it kind of came to the conclusion, and I, I agree with them, that getting somebody with the expertise of trail layout that will be beneficial to both the biker and to the land would be best served. And as you see, this proposal's, it's less than ten thousand to have this guy come in, do the, the trail layout and, and give his recommendations for that property. I think it's a ideal piece of property. If you talk to a couple individuals, they'll tell you that there's some beautiful trees on that property, so it would be left natural. We're not talking about clearing, clearing the land to put some kind of recreation access there. It would be left natural and have multi-access trails. And I think it'd be a great use and would fit into what we need. Katie, if you want to give us a little bit further background?
Right. So, back in early, mid-2015, Sherri Sullivan and I actually went up to Montgomery for an ADECA, which is, I can never remember the entire, the Alabama recreational, Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs. They have a grant for recreational trails program and so Sherri and I went up for the workshop for that. At that time, we were waiting to see how the city classified that property. So, we were unable to move forward with that, but there have been multiple cities that have been able to bring in tourism dollars because of their trail systems that they have been able to build. And so, that it would be a great opportunity economically, but also we, there was the Get Fit Fairhope program that they tried to implement and that would be a great opportunity. You know, it's endless on what the trails would be able to do. Personally, I think it'd be fun, a great place to go, it would be families, I mean, and it's also keeping it natural, you have parking at the clock, you also would have tie-in to the Eastern Shore Trail, which starts up at I-ten and actually ends at Weeks Bay Bridge, and then you also have access to the Community Rec Center, so people can park there and actually access trails from there. So, there's actually a lot of connectivity within that area, it's close to downtown, so people could do, if they're coming over from Mobile, personally having the bicycle shop, we hear a lot of people come over from Mobile, and they will ride their bikes in Fairhope, so they will come, have breakfast, go ride, and then stay for lunch.
I know that we can use impact fees for this too, and incorporate it into, because it's, I don't think it would be a super expensive project.
Right.
I know that the, we have been having an ongoing grant with ADECA for, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but for another, you know, pedestrian running, biking, and so forth down by the Duck Pond, so it's a competitive grant, and you normally don't get it on the first try, and so I'm not sure what number we're on now.
We're on try number two right now.
Okay, yeah, so it's it's one of those ones, we've met multiple times with the new director and so forth, but again, this is something I think regardless you can get funding for.
Right, now, and the funding was kind of secondary, I think, to move forward with, you know, getting this design going, and like you said, it's not gonna be a ton of money to to implement the trails. But go ahead and get this study done and start the ball rolling, and go ahead.
I was gonna say, sorry, and so having it professionally designed, you know, the trails will last a lot longer, but then also the cost of building the trails correctly, it would definitely be well worth it in the long run for them to be professionally built, like you said, instead of going in with a bush hog and just making trails. So, we've seen trails that have been professionally built, Cold Water Mountain, you know, that would be a good example of them, just because that's IMBA or National Mountain Biking Association, that was their main trail project, and that was Anniston, and that's what they've done multiples, I guess, studies on, the economic impact of it, and it's definitely improved.
Well, I think that before we talk about how we're gonna fund a study on what the trails are gonna look like, we should discuss whether or not we want biking trails on that piece of property. I mean, I've heard from a lot of bikers that are, that would like it to be there, and I think there's one other place in town that should be considered for this, and that's out there on the forty acres that we own at the Boy Scout Cabin, pretty rough, it it may not be as, may not be as beautiful as Fly Creek right there, but I think that that that's also gonna be some people's hangup, is is how do we accommodate bikers and trail walkers and people that are trying to picnic alike? Is this, are you envisioning this being used just some of the time for bike trails or all of the time? And I worry about the ecological impact, you know, I'm hoping that when they build the trails and they're natural, you're not gonna have, you know, runoff leading to the creek, all that, all that has to be considered.
And maintenance.
Really, and I guess my biggest concern is are people going to view that as, I don't want to go to that park because, you know, I'm worried about getting run over by a bicycle. So how do we, how do we use that land? Because I think the minority of people are not gonna be bicyclists that want to use that land, but so how do you, how do you accommodate the people that just want to go out there for the nature or a Sunday picnic or any day picnic for that matter, and 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 have the bicycling allowed as well? That to me is.
It seems like the cycling would maybe be something that could go around the perimeter, that you would still have maybe an interior trail system as well, but.
I think, Katie, go ahead.
There are two different, to address the two different options, Percy Warner Park in Nashville, and then other multiple parks around the country, just most familiar with Percy Warner, they have designated trails for hiking and for bicycles, and so they are clearly designated.
How large are those areas, do you know?
It's a much larger, they have over six thousand acres.
Right, and we have, and we have thirty.
Right, but there's, but.
I think that's seventy, isn't it?
I'm sorry, seventy, thirty's up front, I'm sorry.
But that's an entire, much larger area, but they do have designated trails that are clearly marked, you know, you need to stay here, and most people are gonna respect that. And then the property on thirteen and Twin Beach, we've actually gone out there and looked as well, and then that was when it was owned by the Single Tax Colony, and then the city bought that.
They did, they did.
And then we also had a verbal agreement with the property owners on the east side of thirteen to do a recreational use statute, to go back there and build trails. But after heavy rains, we determined that it was not a viable property on either property, the flooding would, on a heavy rain, unfortunately. Yeah, and so the, it wouldn't be.
It's got a lot of wetness.
They would be wiped out the first big rain, unfortunately.
I think, you know, other biking that's off-road and walking could be incorporated into the ballpark, because a lot of ballparks now are built with lots of things going on, and then the maintenance is also, they're all going out there anyway for other maintenance, something like this I think is different because it's really just for mountain biking, and there's not a huge, I mean, what else would it be for?
Well, you could do, there are also different trail systems that you may have, they're gonna be able to build family-friendly trails, where you can go out, you do not have to have a specific, what they're gonna term a mountain bike.
Well, I mean, but it's biking, I meant like biking mostly though.
Yeah, I mean, so that is where IMBA and having a professional come in and be able to, like, looking at a geographical survey and being like, okay, well, we can put this type of trail here, or we can do like you suggested, like possibly a perimeter that's gonna be even ADA compliant. So, I mean, you can definitely do trails that are gonna be open to anyone and everyone of hiking, of anybody, you could take your toddler, take a toddler out there and be active.
Bikers to the left, walkers to the right, you know, all kind of signage.
Yeah, I mean, and that is part.
And it might not be everything for everybody.
I think that do do a biking trail and make it great, you know, and then the walking and off-road cycling, you know, do it in another park. I think that would maybe have to have a little bit more maintenance than something like this.
So, if we start, I would say just start smaller and having something that everyone can use, and then grow and build it, I mean, that would be.
Yeah, my, my, I'm not, I'm not opposed to biking, I just think that it, that that in this city, and we're getting younger, we're getting younger every day, our population's getting younger, that it's, it's certainly something that that we could use and we need, I, but I still think the vast majority of people might want to use that property for something. So, I just, all I'm saying is we just want to make sure that they can be, they can coexist.
Lesses in what?
What's that?
Lesses in what?
Walking or something.
Just a nature preserve?
No, I'm thinking more more walking trails or, you know, just some, you know, some park benches out there for people to sit and for people to, you know, have some some picnic benches, and and I certainly think you can go around the perimeter, as long as you, you know, stay away from, you know, you know, creating an environmental hazard out there and having, you know, the water just rush down the hill and into the creek, and then.
That's why we're having these professionals, I think we're overthinking this, you know.
I think they can make great recommendations.
Yeah.
There's, there's no place where somebody could get out on the off-road mountain pedal bike, we're not talking about a motorcycle or any kind of motorized vehicle, we're talking about a bicycle, you know, people can picnic three miles down along the bay, we're trying.
Well, I'm saying, but also you're spending a lot of money on a park that may only serve a very small population of the city, as compared to spending, you know, money on the park that might serve a greater population of the city, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
I think the question is that, do we want to spend the ten thousand to have a study so that when we look at the overall use of that land, we have this study, and we can say, this is what this would look like? Or do we want to go ahead and figure out what we want to do first, and then come back?
That's kind of what I'm saying, you know, you know, you give the parameters to the designer, if you know what the overall plan for the property is, and then you say, you have to work within these parameters, as opposed to giving them a full canvas, to you, you know.
Can I add one more thing too? The National Park Service is doing the Connectivity Master Plan with us and Bike Ped, and I would love for you to be on that Stakeholder Committee as well. But, I mean, part of the reason they're doing that is to help us determine how we want bikes and pedestrians and all of this connected throughout the entire city, and they're looking at all of these areas. They could look at this, of course, I mean, as part of it, if this is a consideration, but it, you know, how it would tie into the other, the Eastern Shore Trail and all the other trails and recreational facilities throughout the city is an important component, and it could be part of, this could be part of that.
And the Eastern Shore Trail is actually, I'm not, if you're familiar, but it is a multi-use path, so there are people on bicycles, there are people walking, and there are benches along the way. You know, you can stop at Mullup Point, because it connects to there, and so we know plenty of people that will start their bike ride there. And it is, it's great, you can ride your bike to the pitcher plant bog and have a picnic and come back, or, you know, we, there's a ton of people that park up, that's what is it, Bayfront Park? That's not, is that direction? I mean, it's, it would be invaluable. People tend to, when they also move slower, they've done traffic studies, when people move slower, they notice more, and they're more likely to spend their money in Fairhope, if they're able to ride, walk through it. Also, growing up, IMES Nature Center was amazing, grew up in Tennessee, but it was amazing, and I looked it up recently, but school trips, you know, we went out and learned what trees were what, happened to see bugs. Like, you can always utilize it for school trips as well, for education purposes, like, it's not just bicycles. I mean, there's a way to live harmoniously with everyone, like the Eastern Shore Trail, I'm not sure, I've never had anybody, you know, occasionally to say, somebody, you know, wouldn't get out of the way, or somebody went past, but as far as I know, it's extremely harmonious through there.
I think it's important when we plan all of our parks, like this overall project that that we're doing with Sherri, with the, Sherri Lee has organized, is that once we have an inventory of everything, and finding the best use for all of these parks and locations, then it's also ranking it as an order of priority that will impact the most people and residents, because, you know, all of the projects are gonna cost money, and, you know, one of the biggest things we know right now is that the ballpark we're wanting to, who knows when we're gonna develop it, but just put kind of everything, all the parks, in a bigger plan with kind of a level of priority of what we want to do first. And if a project doesn't fall in that priority, then there's no reason why you couldn't get private funding to do it if they're motivated enough. But as far as tax dollars, I think we need to prioritize, we got a lot that we want to do right now.
Counsel, what comments, thoughts?
Looking at you, Jay.
I can feel you all. You know, I mean, it doesn't seem like a lot of money to to figure out if it's something that's even a feasible alternative out there, I mean, it doesn't mean we have to do it. You know, this is really the first proposal I've heard to do anything to that property.
And that's kind of my point for bringing it forward, I mean, the city's owned the property for how long, we're just gonna sit there and, I don't, spend twenty thousand, thirty thousand, whatever it costs to implement it, to where some people can get some use out of it.
And then if we decide to do something.
We're already owning the property, I'm not saying buy three million dollars for the land and put a bike trail on it, we've got the property.
Yeah, that's kind of how I see it. I've got no problem at least, I mean, maybe we spend this, and it turns out that the next meeting we have a hundred people show up and say, I think that's a terrible idea, I don't want it to be used for that, I want it to be used for something else. Then we can revisit that, but it's, you know, I mean, at this point, I don't, without there being any reason to suspect there's any objection to it, there's, there's no other plan, there's no other alternative, why not, you know, at least explore this a little bit?
Again, after, if you have a plan, even if this comes in and we say, you know, this is how we want to do it and this priority, I just don't think it's gonna be a huge, huge expense, and it could be a public-private thing, you know, that that's funded, but.
And the ADECA grant, like, I've called them and touched base with them on the, I guess it would be for twenty twenty-one, that they do a twenty-eighty match, or at least that's what it's been.
Right, and like I said, the ADECA plan that we've been working on as a priority is a more pedestrian-friendly walking, biking trail down at the bay.
Yeah, and so it's not like this city, at least I assume, is not gonna completely come out of, I mean, it's.
Money, money's not even the slightest concern, it's, it's, the stakeholders haven't had a single say in what we're doing on that land yet.
And ADECA is, we're working with ADECA for this, which is the same funding, see?
And Jay, my, my thought, I mean, on the stakeholder issue, I mean, obviously, we should get some input on this, but I mean, this is not something that fundamentally changes the scope of the land.
That's true too, that's very true, it's not something that can be undone, that's very true.
And so, this is a temporary thing, that that it's a bike park for a year, two years, and then.
We wouldn't want to do that.
We want to change it to something else, this is not something that can, that prevents that.
Maybe twenty years down the road.
So that won't go over real well if you get it out there for a year and then pull the rug out, remember, under everybody.
Well, you know, it might be super unpopular in the biking community, but.
I mean, I don't know, I could get, I like the idea of the bike trail, but I also like the idea of knowing the plan for that property and then implementing everything, just so we're not in a situation where we say, enjoy your bike trail, and then two years later, well, we're actually gonna do this, so no more bikes over here.
Hey, I think the biking enthusiast would enjoy two years of a cool trail, then no time at all, so.
I'll take that.
And we can also incorporate it in the comprehensive land use, because it will include the best places for different things, in addition to the study that Sherri Lee is working on. It's definitely in a scope for everything we want to do.
Just for the record, I'm not a biking enthusiast.
I've never done mountain biking.
My bike has a basket on it, so.
See, we can make part of it.
You can have one of those too.
So, Councilman Brown, if you, if you were to give this money to to design the trail, what kind of parameters would you think about putting on the designer? I mean, you can't go out there and say, you can put trails wherever you want on this property, and that's why, you know, we have to have some kind of parameters on this.
Yeah, well, read a little his proposal there, it's got some parameters in there, what is, what is project, and I'm not, we're not gonna get into that, you can, you can read it before I bring it up again, but there's, you know, project approach, what is, what he does, his timeline, what he needs proceed, so he spells it out in his proposal, you know, he's not gonna just come back and say, here's your proposal, give me my money.
So he would have a couple meetings with stakeholders to figure out where you'd want to lay it out and all that.
And they'll have to do like chi-a-lot, little surveys, so they're encroaching.
But if you have the stakeholders, which are all bicyclists, I mean, we still have to, I think, put some, some box around it to say.
It sounds like we need some kind of survey or forum for the citizens to start addressing what they want to see on on that property, if anything.
Well, that might be your opinion, my opinion is, it's either gonna be left natural like it is.
That was his opinion.
Natural like it is. Don't do anything with the property, which I think is is not smart, I mean, the city owns the property, you, you clear it to make it look like a Knoll Park, a natural preserve, or you clear it to make it look like a natural preserve with bike trails, where you get, and and there's trails on Knoll Park.
Well, I'm gonna give you an example too, let's say the bike trail's on the perimeter, and, and I mean, I, I know, I'm making a big to-do about some of this stuff, believe me, I did. But then, but the walkers are like, well, I'd really like to walk along the creek, but the trail goes along the creek, and I don't have the best view, the bicyclists have the best view.
You can make it multi-use, so you can make a path where it's wide enough to accommodate everyone, is what, I mean, it's very possible to have the guy, to have them propose a, the trail system that is, everyone can use it, I mean, it's, you would, we can tell him, we would like a, the majority of the trails to be X amount wide, that is going to be ADA compliant, that would be, because Sherri Lee, we've worked with, there's a gentleman on Bike Ped Committee that is, I guess, disabled, would be the.
Chris Riley.
Yeah, Chris Riley, so, you know, we want it, and he's active outdoors, so we want it for literally everyone to be able to use it. He should be able to take his bike with a basket on there and have fun, I mean.
Construction of natural surface trail facilities and bike parks that provide high-quality experiences for visitors of all ages and ability levels.
I just don't think it's gonna be for a cruiser, but it will be for multiple.
You've never seen me ride that cruiser.
Okay, okay, I mean, okay.
You have to stand up and really dig in.
Really get into it.
No gears, just.
No gears, just all man.
I got it, you got it. Totally.
Think about it.
Yeah, just let Lisa know if you want to put the funding of the, the study on the agenda. agenda.
Thanks, Joseph, thanks, Katie.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
But I do have another, another piece to this.
Yes, sir.
Proposal.
Is this your opinion?
This is my opinion. Given the, the two parcels are separated by Veterans Drive, I ask the mayor and the council, you know, what is your vision? Obviously, we don't know what's going to happen on either one, whether one of them is left natural with a bike trailer, whether it's left natural or anything happens, but do you, at some point in time, seeing these two parcels needing connectivity? You need, do people need to get from one side to the other?
I like your idea of the tunnel, I really do.
And if you ask yourself, yes, they need to be connected, then there, something needs to be expedited here, because, like Jack just said, I think there needs to be a pedestrian tunnel underneath Veterans Drive that connect the two, with that being-
How deep can you go there?
Well, that'd all have to be, you know-
Would have to be studied, right.
Oh, okay.
It's high ground there, I'd be surprised if we hit water, but, you know, you could, and, and the fact is, is it slopes from the triangle to the other side, which, which naturally helps it, but, a, a good, a good place to, if you've, I mean, I don't know if you're a golfer, but if you've ever been to Timber Creek, and the cart paths go under the roads out there with the tunnels, it's just a great concept, it, it, I mean, I'm sure digging tunnels aren't cheap, but that doesn't look like a real expensive tunnel, it's not the tunnel.
That's a corrugated metal pipe that they actually-
Just a corrugated metal pipe, and I would envision, you know, one, maybe just one of them, or two, and, I mean, it's wide enough to kind of get two golf carts by, so you can certainly have a lot of pedestrian traffic.
And so the reason I ask that now is if, as this proposal goes forward with the roundabout at that intersection, and if Veterans Drive is shut down for that construction, that would be the ideal time to make the connectivity happen.
I would concur.
Yeah.
So, bike trail or no bike trail, do you see those two parcels needing connectivity?
I would say yes.
100%, I do, man.
Man, you just kind of ramped up from just a bike trail to like a serious issue.
Well, you're going to probably have to put the parking on the north end, and so it's, it's a natural, it's a natural to, to park there and have a safe, safe way to get across the, or get under the road.
So I don't know how that ball needs to start rolling about feasibility of that, that tunnel, pedestrian tunnel underneath, but I would hate to miss the opportunity six or eight months or a year after Veterans Drive has been closed, and we've got to go in there and get connectivity somehow.
Mr. Johnson, what would that take to get the ball rolling? Would we be talking to you about that?
Yes, sir. I think we probably, between me in-house and probably hiring a geotechnical engineer to do some studying for it, and make a recommendation of groundwater conditions, things like that, but that's a pretty straightforward design. Either A, the poor man's version is what they did at Timber Creek, which is a corrugated metal pipe, which has about a 30 to 40-year lifespan on it, or if we want to do the Cadillac version, it's a box cover.
Concrete box.
Concrete box cover, which has 100-plus year service life, especially since we're not designed to flow water through it, we're designing it for people and bicycles and maybe golf carts in the future to drive through, so.
Would you divert the water, do you have salt pumps in there, some of that?
Well, that's where you get the geotechnical engineer involved, if, if you can find the right spot in that, in that run of road, hopefully you can have, we're not going to have any water issues, especially if you've got a, a cross gradient that you can run a, a side drain that's picking up the wing wall waters on each side of the high side and getting to the low side, so, it's not, it's not complicated.
What I think we can do tonight, then, is ask the mayor to ask Richard to start laying his eyes on that and kind of scoping out a potential location for, for what would be best suited for that. There is, there is one area where water kind of runs through there, and we want to avoid that, but.
Yes, sir.
What else in regards to that?
That's all I have.
Okay, all right. All right, moving on. Mr. Dias, green space ordinance.
Yes, sir, I'm the council president. I want to talk to you real briefly about the green space. The planning commission of the past year or two has kind of struggled with developments in green space. We have requirements, it's 10% right now, and there's really not that much guidance provided in the subdivision regulations regarding green space, and so it's always a struggle finding usable green space that works for the community. And so what we did is drafted this, an amendment to the subdivision regulations to try to help define green space and make green space context sensitive to the type of development it is, be it rural, low density, suburban, medium density, or urban. And interestingly enough, in the zoning ordinance, there was several, a table in there which was very, very good about green space, what we did is borrowed that from the zoning ordinance and placed it into this amendment. But basically, what we want to do is try to have green space be an asset, our whole goal was, is let's have green space provided appropriately, have it located towards an asset to the, to the subdivision development, a place to recreate, but also make it visually appealing as well, have it defined so you can see it, and we talk about in here defining it by strawberry and some things like that, so you know that that is, you have some physical boundaries to it, so you, so there's no question if you're in the neighborhood, if you're on the, you know, the common, the green space, or somebody's, somebody's property, so we have that. But if I could, I'll go through a real brief, this little slide to a presentation with you, and basically, what we have proposed is to modify the amount provided by density. And the density would be, not the total density of the project, a total acres of the project, but the usable acreage of the project. So a lot of times you have wetlands and watercourses, that's included, we want to narrow that down and exclude that, and then get the density based on the, basically the usable property you have, to give you the density for, for the project, because that is where development will go. So that's one change we provided, but also talking about providing the green space appropriately located by the development type, and this is, the image on the left is called a transect, it's just basically an urban to rural transect, commonly used in form-based codes and some of the new zoning and new land planning, but essentially you have, on the far right, you have basically a downtown area, and in the far left, you have a rural area. And each one of these areas has, you know, different development types, and also different green space types, and on the right-hand side, you see those zones with a green, for example, a park, and so what we're advocating is providing the green space appropriate to the development type. So this table was taken from the zoning ordinance, but we want, and then we want to put it into the subdivision regulations, but you can see, it's kind of hard to see here, but it provides a little more definition, it's in your, it's on, on the third page, second, third page of your handout, but we provide a little more description about where it is, the appropriate size, some size recommendations, some location recommendations, and we hope that that will be utilized to provide guidance to the engineer or designer of the development to, so as to have good quality green space provided. So here's some examples, this is a green, and what I did is went to Google Maps, it's an awesome tool to use, but some places I'm familiar with, and this is just a street shot up on the left-hand side of this green space, and an arrow kind of on the right bottom, bottom right, and you can see that this one is fronted by homes, it's an asset, it's, it's a place to recreate, it's visible from the street, so there's a safety factor there as well, you've got some passive and, you know, casual surveillance, so it provides some protection and some sense of security for you to utilize that, it's not tucked behind homes or behind a fence, it's very out, out in front and in the public. So that's an example of a green, which is more of a suburban, urban-type, type green space. Here is another green, again, if you notice, the home's fronted, it erases a sense of security, because the street goes around it, very visible, very usable for passive recreation, picnicking, throwing the baseball, football, what have you. Another example of a green, same thing, you know, it's kind of dispersed within the neighborhood, again, a place to, to go and, and, and have passive recreation that's, that's secure and a comfortable feeling. Another example of a, of a green, different configuration, different size and shape. This one has a feature in the middle of it, an architectural feature. Same thing here, again, there's multiple ways you can provide these. This is an example of a trail and a greenway, we have a lot of people who put greenways on some of their green space, it's about five feet wide, which is not really a greenway, and so we want to here provide, again, some, some direction, and in your, in the amendment, it talks about the green space, the greenway has to be at least 30 feet wide, that's a usable space for, to put a path through, or multi-purpose trail for connectivity to other trails the city may have, or other developments may have, or also a sidewalk if you chose that. But it's got to be at least 30, 30 feet wide is the criteria there. When you get more into the urban setting, you get more into the plazas, this is an example of a plaza here, and you can see it's not necessarily green space, but it's a place to congregate and to have outdoor sitting, sitting areas and things of that nature. Again, it's, it becomes an aesthetic element to the, to a development. This is a more of a courtyard, now we're getting into more of the pub-private space of green space, when you look at that, this is maybe something you might find, we have one right across the street from the new development over there, courtyard that you can dine in and those kind of things. And then again, obviously, the park where you have a tennis courts and those kind of things like that, and we do provide some criteria here for that, and this is an example of what we would hope to see with something like that. But that's it, just, we, we've been working on this for a while, the planning commission has been struggling with this green space. I think our whole goal is, you know, many times you see some places and it says 10%, you check the box and you put the green space someplace that you can't see it, or it's not usable, we want to, if at all possible, make sure that green space is provided at the right scale and the right location, that becomes an asset to the, to the community that helps improve and maintain property values. One thing I did not mention is, we're also going to do a green space guide, a handout for, for the development community, which will have some similar pictures of these and some examples to help them kind of visualize, understand what we're trying to achieve with that. It would not be a regulation, it'd just be more of a, of a suggestion and a guide to look at and try to pattern maybe some of these green spaces off of that.
Boy, and I, I, this has been a long time coming, not too long, you got on it pretty quick, but I mean, it's, I think it's for the city in general, it's, it's long overdue. And, you know, if you guys ever come to a planning commission meeting, I grill the developers about green space and using the backside of a subdivision and calling out their 10%, and it might be a slope to a, you know, something that, you know, and I, I think that if we want to build a community where, you know, the people can get out and be active, and, and kids can play, it needs to be real usable green space, and, and I'll say it, you know, if it, if it drives up the cost of development a little bit, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a speed bump to, to growth as well, and it has that, it has that dual purpose as well.
Now, as the density increases, so does the open space, however many times when you get increased densities, you're talking about condos and things like that, which is, they're sort of clustered, and so the green space becomes easier to, to provide, but, you know, as, as council president mentioned, we have been struggling with this for quite some time, and it's always, it's always a battle, when you're, when you don't have really good criteria, it's really kind of difficult, and we've had good criteria, just, we could just improve them a little bit better, I think, it's been difficult to ensure that we're getting the right thing, right product we want to get out of it, and, and I think this would absolutely be an asset to the community. You can drive around, we were in battles, I mean, in the colony this morning, Richard and I were looking at a couple of projects that were under construction, and they've done a good job with their, with their green space. And a lot of these look just like the ones I've shown in some of these pictures, and those property values have increased, and there's other places around town, and other places around Baldwin County and this region that I can show you that have provided the green space to where it is an absolute asset, and it becomes really, you know, if you're fronting that green space, your property becomes some, some prime real estate. And it also helps us get away from more the cookie cutter kind of look, which we, we want to be unique and, and have unique developments that have a sense of place, and this, this will all help us get to that point.
Do you see any issues with, you know, enforcement of this, or are there any gray areas that, I saw one, but just almost no way to get around it, you addressed it, you know, you're talking about that area, areas adjacent to retention pond or something, you know, you, you can't call that green space if it's just there to hold water unless you have room for recreational uses around it, then it's a real amenity then.
Right, and, and we have, I wish I'd have brought that with me today, I forgot to put in the side presentation, but there's a couple places that I'm familiar with that have, we're, we're going to allow partial credit for some of the ponds, but it has to be, as council president said, it has to be clearly part of the green space, and there's a couple, and we'll put in our guide we put together, there's one place that has, the one end of the pond is basically a green space with, with a path going around the pond with seating and so forth, with trees and shrubs, it, it's clearly part of the green space, and so that's something that, that we'll, we'll make sure that we put into that, in that guide, because, and it's got to be fronting the street too as well. Many times, what we don't want to have is green space that's put behind, behind somebody's house, and then they put a fence up and you can't get to it, you know. I, I was somewhere the other day, last week, looking at some property, and had nice green space, but it had a corridor that was created, they had like a little 15-foot strip, well, what happened was, all the homes built fences, so you had a 15, I mean, a 15-foot corridor going about a mile to get to the green space, and, great idea, but maybe, and its execution, it maybe failed a little bit with that one, and, and so we want to, we want to try to learn from those, I've looked, I've done a lot of research and tried to find the best practices and try to learn from other people's mistakes, and this won't be perfect, I'm sure, but I think we're going to a good start to try to fix some of the issues and, and really have, have developments we can be really proud of, and the developer can, would be proud of as well, and will, you know, be economically viable.
Well, counsel, I, I know this is a lot, there's a lot in here to, to maybe digest, but I would, I would ask you what your comfort, comfort level is with putting this on an agenda, if not the next one, very, very soon, if you can, as you can tell by tonight's agenda, I mean, it's, there's, there's, the subdivisions are coming at, planning and zoning, just, you know.
Now, council president, this will be going to the planning commission, and they actually will adopt, will adopt it, the subdivision reg, as part of the subdivision regulations for this.
If council doesn't adopt the subdivision regulations?
No, sir.
What happens if they turn it down?
Good question, we can bring it back again.
The ordinance that says who adopts them?
I got a question, came in a little late, but when you say clearly represents, is that clearly in your eyes or clearly to the engineer? Because, you know, when, when that's said, it's always a, somebody's going to push the envelope.
They are.
They plant, they plant four trees around this thing, call that a green space or something.
Right, you're right, and, and I've been doing this about 25 years, and you're right, there's always somebody who's going to push the envelope, and so I think what you, what I've found, you have to do is you have to develop the best criteria you can get, you can develop, you have to provide the best guides you can provide, and then when push comes to shove, you have to stick to your guns and say, this is how it's got to be done. You can, if, you know, I mean, I hate to say this, but if they don't like it, there's, there's remedies for that, it may be, you know, court, what have you, but I think, you know, if you, if you give a little, now you've opened Pandora's box, and then you start losing the significance of, of what you're, what you've tried to achieve through new standards, because I tell you, once you, once you allow it one time, everybody will hear about it, and they'll be going through that same door.
Absolutely.
Will, will this be on the February?
Yes, sir.
Planning commission?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you handed it out at the last one for everybody to review, yeah? Okay. All right, we better, we better move on.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne. All right, committee updates. Jimmy?
Let's see, we had a, library had a meeting during our last council meeting, obviously they're still under repairs, so they are having to close on occasion, and I'd just say how much we appreciate the library staff working in, in a scenario where there are repairs going on, you know, around them, and then they're having to shut down, and I know they don't want to, don't want to be an inconvenience to their patrons, but, but it's, it's important that we get the repairs done, and I appreciate them being, being patient as we go through that process. Historic Preservation Committee has a special call meeting this upcoming week, trying to connect with different leaders within the, within the city staff that might be involved in helping them decide whether, what direction they would go with a, a historical commission to, to work on drafting an ordinance. We do have some new leadership there, some new members, so they're kind of trying to catch up to speed with what all has been done in, in prior years, and then the Environmental Advisory Board had a special call meeting Friday afternoon, met with Richard and with Jay, and discussed just some updates on, on the sewer and, and updates on the various projects we have as far as upgrading infrastructure, so, that's it.
Okay. Robert?
Yeah, the Bike Ped Committee met and circled back around, trying to come up with the, what has been discussed in previous years, and getting a, kind of a spreadsheet of what's been done and what hadn't been done. They tried to follow what the rec board does as far as a list of priorities and work, work from that, try to get some kind of format. The EAC, Ken Cole and myself, who's, Ken's the chairman currently of the EAC, we met with Eddie Tyler, John Wilson, John Gray, and Cecil Christenberry last week. with Eddie Tyler, John Wilson, John Gray, and Cecil Christenberry last week to further discuss the special tax district. The school board is coming up with a kind of a blanket format. First of all, it's a resolution that the council will have to approve, as well as what, what steps are taken after that to implement the special tax district. So again, EAC and myself are continuing that discussion and look forward to bringing that to y'all when I get it.
Kevin?
I have no reports. I'll play next one, where I'll leave next one.
Okay. Jay?
I don't have any report.
Okay. I don't have anything to note. Department heads, do you have anything to bring forth?
Do you mind if Richard and I do update you together?
Hi.
It sort of falls under the grant updates because we have, Jeff, do you have that presentation?
As you know, we, y'all did fund the.
There we go.
Some top items on pedestrian traffic safety for downtown. And we got a presentation back from the design engineer. We want to share it with you. So you kind of see where, where we're looking to go. And we don't have to have feedback tonight. But we'll just go through the slides quite quickly. So go ahead to the next one.
Real quick. Next. Here you go.
I'm sorry. All right. There was three locations identified that we knew we had the, the top issues. One was speed. Well, let me start in numerical order. There on Section Street, just south of Fairhope Avenue, Section Street there around Pine and Oak, as well as Fairhope Avenue coming into the central business district, especially a speed issue. So, so section, the section on Section Street there around Delamar, looking at protecting the pedestrian crossings and as well as looking at a safety strip down the center of the road, which is demonstrated there. These crossings would be flush with the pavement, but would be out of a different material such as the brick pavers we're using for the sidewalks, they stand out. This is the view as it exists today. And here are some examples of the safety strip, which does two things. One, it still accommodates traffic. It accommodates trucks unloading and loading. But if you get your wheel over it, the texture is different and thus is a traffic calming item. As opposed to going with an actual material that has a texture, there are options to do things in a more artistic bent, which are much less expensive. The middle is just white thermoplastic material. And of course, the one on your right is a product of an artist. We are a little bit more leaning to the traditional paver type surface.
The paver's what was recommended to by the traffic engineer in the PL study recall.
Here is one of the junctions of the crosswalks. And the biggest challenge is, is they do not project out further than the parking places. So that if there is a large van parked there and a person is trying to enter into the crosswalk, the oncoming traffic doesn't see it. This is pushing that landing out, especially choking the entrance to Delamar because Delamar is one-way now. So it doesn't need to be the width of two-lane traffic. Here's the other corner at Delamar, which, just an example, you have a pedestrian landing that's coming out into Section Street that does not tie into a crossing. And there is not a crossing there.
There's nowhere.
And it's probably not a good idea to encourage a crossing there. And this is, one, choking down Delamar and again, enhancing our traditional downtown landscaping. And I'm gonna go quick. Here is looking at that other corner of Delamar. And this is the big thing, choking down, getting the pedestrian out to a landing where traffic can clearly see it. And also it would provide a wider sidewalk section there as well. Here, and this is one of those striped out dead areas in, in the central business district that really doesn't serve really any purpose.
It serves those people that park there really well.
Yeah, well, illegally technically. But this is, we're, not only we're the cheapest version where we could reclaim one parking place and just keep the striping.
And that's one of the locations the Bike Ped Committee wants, Bike Racks.
And I think a little landscaping there would be better than the yellow paint. But just identifying opportunities to improve everything there. The biggest issue with the mid-block crossings at this location is that it is mid-block. These would involve active signals that are integrated into the road surface so that when the pedestrian wants to use it, it is, is using LEDs to let note, let the drivers, drivers coming through know that they're coming in. This is the current view. And this is what it looked like. And you can see the LED lights that are embedded in the asphalt on each side. And there would be a pedestrian button that you would push that would illuminate the crossing for use. Again, the other area there, which is at the PD heading toward the city hall. Again, no crossing with crossing and also bumping out the corners and expanding the landscaping. And then finally on Fairhope Avenue coming in at Fairwood, as you know, we have a very wide pavement section there. It's almost fourteen foot in each direction. And it is a place where we're seeing an extraordinary amount of speed coming into town. As you can see, that's very comfortable to the drivers. Wide open, a lot of asphalt. Proposal would be that the island median on Fairwood actually be brought out into, almost projecting into Fairhope Avenue to give the driver a, a signal that, that there's a choke point there. And that whole intersection would be done in a material such as a brick paver that has a texture to it. So that when you entered into it, you, you get a change in tactile response from your car, as well as the island on, on Fairhope would be projected to the east. So there still could be the left turning movement, but it's not just the free wide sweeping movement into, to Fairwood. As well as the lane going westbound, those curbs are stand-up curbs. And there is a confinement of that lane down to a normal lane width of like twelve or eleven feet. So that the driver is going to slow down to basically enter into that reduced strip. So our next steps is, and the one thing that's left out of here, we are in this scope of this project, adding pedestrian signals to Fairhope and Section. It's just, it's basically just hanging the electronics. It's not anything that, that has pretty pictures to go with it. But that's also included in this project as well. But that's where we are. You know, the, y'all have already funded the design, but we don't want to pursue anything that's shown here that you feel uncomfortable with. And if there's areas that we need to look at, we, we have the ability to adjust that scope based on the budget that we have. The one thing that we did ask, at least our recommendation from the staff, is there's the safety strip down the middle of Section, it would be bid as an add-alternative, meaning that, that it would be, you guys have to decide if that's a part of this project that you want to see. It, it could be a high dollar. And two, I have a little healthy fear that that may be even a little too extreme for us in Fairhope. But at least we want to explore what that cost would be and, and give y'all the option to include that in a project if we go for it.
I liked it. I liked all those recommendations. And we need to get started somewhere.
Yep.
And I'd say, I'd ask y'all to just, you know, get a, get a, get a budget together. And that's just me. I want to hear from other council members. But I, I will say that the one thing, and it's not, it doesn't have so much to do with pedestrian safety, but it still has to do with, with downtown traffic is, we've mentioned it numerous times, is something directing people to the parking garage, whether it's just a P on the road, the International Symbol for Parking with an arrow. I'd like, I would love to see it on Section Street and Turb Street. And it's just long, long overdue. And I wish y'all could do it tomorrow.
At the end of this meeting, we talked, we discussed going ahead with the first round. And that would be the first round.
It's gonna be very noticeable.
Right.
Yeah.
And not to hog too much of the time, because I know you want to know this. Just so you know, for the Fly Creek main channel dredging, the pre-bid meeting is tomorrow. Bid opening is Tuesday, the 12th of February. And then you guys will see it the second meeting in February. So please say a prayer that many, many contractors are showing up tomorrow to talk about putting together a bid on this. So.
Quick question. Go ahead, Wayne.
I was gonna mention that the Fairview Avenue, that project at the intersection of Fairwood, that'd be a great gateway into downtown. We'd envision maybe a sign or some block into downtown to be a great place to kind of open that gateway until you know you're entering downtown. It'd be a great combination.
Agreed.
The, the other crosswalk, what about at Oak? Since that's kind of your first one coming into downtown?
And we can include that as well. So.
What, what infrastructure do we still have downtown for utilities? Because that could help with the median you're talking about. I mean, for budget.
Absolutely. I mean, we, we look at all that. And again, we're just, we've gotten the point where we've got concepts. Now we gotta start narrowing it down so we can come back and let you kind of know what, what the budget dollars look like and how this project can be structured. So.
And I think Oak is on the list on Section. And there was another accident there on Friday, by the way. I took pictures and emailed it around.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We're adjourned and try to be back in about three or four minutes.
You don't have that walker pushing the envelope there, Rick?